Is there a first question to get things started? Or are we gonna have to go with the preference? Go for it.
Um, there's a rise in obesity in young people. What can the school system do to address this issue?
Can I answer that?
Well, it's...
Or do you have a...
You gotta go back and forth.
Oh, are you gonna... okay.
You can go on the first one.
That's fine. Um, I think neighborhood schools or having a school that you can walk to is really important. Uh, kid, I walk to East High School about two and a half miles every day from there to there and from there. Byers Junior High School, the same thing. I am in a school that promotes wellness and promotes healthy eating, and I think that we need to be replicating some of these things in our schools. I think that having physical education in our core curriculum is really important. I have a son who would not be happy with school and who would not be engaged unless we have physical activities as part of our everyday curriculum. And one of the things that I've seen in my school is that teachers who aren't experienced or who are feeling stressed about discipline issues will use physical education and recess time as a punitive measure. I don't think that's okay. I think all of our kids need to get out there and exercise. I have a child that has some special needs that if she didn't have exercise, she would be squirrely in the classroom and making it difficult for her to learn. So I think we need to reemphasize exercise and that walking to school is perhaps one of the best ways to get exercise. Thank you.
Okay, my turn? Okay. Well, let me make it clear that, I mean, I've had two children at neighborhood schools. I think neighborhood schools are fantastic. Everything else being equal, all kids should be able to walk to school. My kids have walked to school, ridden their bikes. I think it's great. The, um, for physical education in particular. But one of the things I think that we need to do in Denver is we need to look carefully at integrating physical education into the day or in after-school activities. I think that it's really criminal that kids don't get an opportunity to really use their bodies. I think the GALL school does a wonderful job of integrating that on a daily basis. I'd like all of our schools to do that. I mean, I know, I've got two kids who have some serious learning disabilities where physical education will make an absolutely big difference for them, being able to concentrate. I'd like to see us make it a part of every day. And we did that when we designed 3A and 3B. We were careful to add in money to expand physical education. It costs money. It isn't cheap. I'd like to do more of that. I'd like to see it in every school, every day, and we need to support it. Absolutely.
I don't mean to step in on this, but it seems like that question also has to do with the nutrition in the schools. Is that something you...
Absolutely. Vending machines that carry candy. The Green School has healthy vending machine options. They're not allowed to go to the vending machines until after school. They can't go to the vending machines during school, and I think that they are able to use it perhaps during lunchtime, but all of the options are healthy. And we do have revenue in the Denver Public Schools from our vending machines, but if we're gonna do vending machines, let's make sure that we're giving our children healthy choices. Because nutrition in our school is extremely important since we have an acre farm and we try and teach children that potatoes come from the ground and not the grocery store in a plastic bag. That's really important for children to understand the source of their food.
I agree on vending machines. I think there should only be healthy options in the vending machines. And I also think we need to look carefully at the... We sort of started an effort at Denver School of the Arts when I spent four years on the CSC there to try to bring in a healthier lunch to the kids. And partially because of pressure from CSCs, governing bodies of schools around the city, and sort of parent revolution, the DPS is focused now. It has a whole new scratch cooking system for their lunches, and they're doing a lot better job. I think we've got a lot further to go, and I'd like to see some more options on a school-by-school basis. We really wanted to bring an organic outside group in, and we just couldn't make the numbers work. I'd like to see more funding for that.
If we have a question on here, we should probably move up your association here more moderately so that it's better.
The EPA guidelines are that no school should be sighted within a half mile of a highway. If I-70 is widened according to the current CDOT plan, it will be brought within 70 feet of Swansea's school. The handout you got shows that there are 16 schools and nine daycare centers currently within the EPA pollution impact area. None of those schools score higher than a C on the assessment test. If you're elected and a resolution is brought to the board, requesting that CDOT give a supplemental EIS to rewrite routing the highway and taking it out of Denver, would you support that resolution?
I think that it's absolutely critical that our kids are safe and secure and healthy in their schools, and the answer to your question is yes. And I don't understand the facts certainly as well as you do. I'd like to learn more about that, but that sounds like a serious problem.
All we're asking is that they study the rewrite.
I think that we absolutely do, and I think pollution is a serious problem for kids.
I would like to see some more information about it too, but I think it's crucial that we protect our children from environmental problems. And I would like to see more information about it, but I'd also like to see the community have more access to the information. I'm glad that you're coming to House District meetings and to INC and talking to the community about the importance of having all of the information so that you really have your lip loaded and can go to CDOT and say, "Listen, our kids' health is the most important issue to our citizens." So yes, I would. Thank you for bringing it up.
I don't think there was one over... okay.
I've got a bit of a nightmare from a decade ago when my mom turned to Ebert. It was a public school that was left to die under Place Class Special School with a "Do Not Trust Pass" sign on it. The kids that had gone there were neighborhood kids, project kids, homeless kids, kids in cars, and then they had no place to go. I had this, I can't get rid of this image of a school. Maybe it became a fantastic school that the neighborhood kids can't go to. Can you help me envision that we're not gonna keep going down that road where kids can't go to their neighborhood school?
My turn? This is really a very passionate issue for me. I alluded to my being voluntarily open enrolled to Smiley. I was the only child on the bus from Capitol Hill up to Smiley at 26th and Holly. Therefore, I had no before, after-school, or extracurricular activities. And I know that the mill has helped us bring in some enrichment programs, and I think that's important, but that doesn't really replace the community feeling you get staying within your neighborhood. That is so important. And I think, as I said before, that needs to be the priority before we start proliferating our district with more charter schools, more innovation schools, and losing some accountability that comes with some of our traditional programs. Even though the waivers can help us with some choices, I think there's also an accountability problem. And one of the things that will happen is we start starving our neighborhood schools because we put so much emphasis into the charter schools. And I think it's important, if we have a turnaround school starting up, that we need to put as much emphasis and finances and resources into keeping that school open rather than then going to the next bright charter school that may not be something the community wants or needs or that is addressing the greater community's needs. Not just a few specific kids, but we need to make sure that we have neighborhood schools available because they will take all kids, and they are obligated to keep those kids in the school. And I'll stop. Thank you. I'm very passionate about this issue. It's important to me personally.
I mean, that sounds... I'm very sympathetic to that. I think that, you know, DPS has a lot of properties, and I think that there's gotta be a way to be able to keep those kids in the same vicinity so they can walk to school too. And I don't remember the specifics. I know there were other buildings in the vicinity to move those schools to. I know that, I think the school that moved from, into Ebert actually moved from a school that wasn't very far away, and now it's being used for a different purpose. Those kids certainly could have been accommodated either in the same building or in one of those other buildings. And I'd like to learn more about it, and if that comes up in the future, I absolutely promise that the first priority will be to try to keep those kids so that they can get to their school easily and be in the neighborhood.
She's never gonna call. Okay, just to know that I'm over here, so go ahead with that one.
I was just wondering where you both stand on school vouchers.
I am opposed and always have been opposed to vouchers. I think that public money needs to be administered by a board of education and used for schools to meet the standards and don't bring in other religion or other kinds of off-academic crap programs. So I'm against vouchers, always have.
I'm absolutely against vouchers. I'm absolutely against privatizing our public school system. Vouchers are the trajectory that we're going to see when we start opening a proliferation of charters and innovation schools. That's what happens in districts throughout our country when we open up the floodgates to privatizing our public schools. Vouchers will do that, and it's not just around religious schools, but any school that is receiving private money paid by taxpayers, our money. Our money needs to stay in our public schools for every child in the district.
My question kind of follows this. It's for both of you, maybe to delineate a little bit between your answers if there is a difference. And it is about privatizing schools and how that's going to work and how we're gonna... privatizing with charters specifically. And I wanted to know if either of you are accepting contributions from any private charter schools.
My turn? Um, our district is very blessed. I've already mentioned our DSST, and it was a school that our community wanted. We had a vacant building, which has gone through a lot of different, has morphed from my junior high school into the Denver School of the Arts, into the alternative high school, then into a vacant building that drew a lot of bad stuff, which is what happens when you have vacant buildings. And I think that the charter movement has moved our neighborhood system into becoming a private system, and that charter schools that are run by private organizations are not as accountable as our traditional neighborhood schools. And so I believe that it's important for our board to carefully look at how these schools are created and that we follow the direction of our communities and what kind of schools they want. But I don't want to see us bringing in a lot of outside money. I have not received any outside money from outside the state. I'm getting individual donations, and I have received an endorsement from the Classroom Teachers Association. They are critical stakeholders in our Denver Public Schools, and they are... It's important for us to remember when we talk about that, that good working conditions for the adults and the teachers means that we have good learning conditions. So I would like to see effective, experienced teachers stay in our public schools and not be pushed out by the charter movement or the privatization movement that's coming into our state. Thank you.
I'm absolutely opposed to any private profit being made off of schools. I think there were, in various places in the country, there have been charter schools that have been private oriented. A few years ago, our legislature passed a law that requires that all charter schools in Colorado be nonprofit corporations, and they are all in the district. I don't know of any DPS charter schools that have contracts with private companies to run them. There may be one, and certainly if that were the case, I'd wanna look at that carefully. I think the Board of Education should have an opportunity to overturn it. I don't think there's any justification for private parties making money off of our schools. I haven't accepted any money from any charter organizations. My contributions have been from individuals. I have about 300 individuals. I have a handful, maybe three or four, from out-of-state special circumstances. Actually, the largest out-of-state check I have is from Jared Polis's mother, who doesn't live in Colorado.
All right. So I'll stick another one from over here.
Okay. I'm in favor of neighborhood schools also, but it seems to me a lot of issues, given that people have a choice in going to a charter school or other places. If the neighborhood school is not doing well in terms of test scores and academically, then oftentimes people would choose another place. So how would you see addressing that kind of issue?
You know, I think that... Oh, it's his turn. I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mike. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely critical that parents have access to the best school for their kids. That's the first goal, getting kids educated. I think that ideally, everybody should go to a neighborhood school because they can walk to it. But I think that it's important that kids who need something different, something special, have access to a different kind of education. To make it work, and it's worked actually quite well, I think, at least in our district, I think it's important that all the money, all the financial resources, follow the child based on the parent's decision on where to send that child. And having choice in East Denver in our district has actually resulted in making our neighborhood schools much, much better because they were at fear of losing kids to the choice schools. We have Steck and Bromwell and Palmer and Montclair. We have some incredible neighborhood schools that frankly weren't there 10 years ago, and I think the whole process is working incredibly well. When my daughter started school in 1998, there were under 60,000 kids in Denver. Now there are 87,000, the last number I saw. And I think having choices for parents so they don't have to move at the suburbs from their kids' run to school if there isn't an acceptable school near them is what brought people back and has made the system way stronger.
I think it would be interesting to see what would happen with students being engaged in our schools if we had a broad curriculum and that it was a curriculum that included arts, music, physical education, but that it also includes libraries, obviously that's important to me, world languages, that we also have a broadened curriculum around social studies that includes civics, economics, and that those are very important things for our kids to become college-ready, career-ready, and life-ready. And there are some frameworks that are developed by educators, both public school educators and college professors, that we should be looking at, including in social studies curriculum. And my guess is that if you have those things in your schools, we're going to see kids become more engaged, and we might see parents become more engaged. I'd like to see us look at that before we start going outside and looking at charters and outsourcing all of the education. I think it's important for us to look at a process that we follow fairly. If we have a school that is not achieving or if it's got a flat rate, we of course need to look at that. We need to give it adequate time to turn itself around. Three to five years, I think, is a good choice. If any of you have been to Ashley or heard about Ashley, their scores just came up almost 30% reading with our SPF rating that just came out a couple of weeks ago. Yet their principal was fired. He had been the one initiating the changes that brought these improvements. So I don't think we should close schools quickly. I think we need to do it very deliberately and that we need to have a process in order for the kids who may have to leave that district to go to a better... to have a process that'll work for the families and the children being disrupted from a closure of a school in their neighborhood.
Awesome. I think you had a question over there.
Yeah. You mentioned the principal at Ashley, and I wanted to ask about principals and what your sense, your visions for the role a principal plays, both in terms of the autonomy and the flexibility that you'd like to see them have, and also the background. We're seeing increasingly, I think, more principals coming from outside of education. Do you think that's a good thing for our schools? Are we moving in the right direction by bringing in principals from a different field?
No, I don't think that that's a good idea. I think principals, at a minimum, should have five to seven years' classroom experience before they start evaluating our teachers or designing the curriculums that are going to work in our school system. We currently have principals who are evaluating teachers that don't even have a minimum of experience that comes close to the teachers who they are evaluating. I think that as part of the evaluation process, principals should be collaborators, coaches, and they should be helping our teachers do a better job. The teachers need to have both peer evaluators, which is part of our LEAP process in evaluating teachers, and that the peer evaluators also have to have classroom experience before they could know how difficult it is to manage 35 kids in a classroom. Some of those kids are English language learners. Some of those children have either learning or physical disabilities. And that if you don't have a principal that understands the difficulties our teachers today are dealing with, it's not fair for our teachers to be evaluated by principals. So I would say that's a really important thing to have experience before we have principals going into our schools, making crucial decisions for our students' education.
One of the reasons I'm interested in being on the school board is I'd like to really look at the way we run our schools, the role of the principal. I think that under the current system, we really ask the principal to do way too much, to be in charge of the parking lot, to be in charge of overseeing teachers, to be in charge of discipline, and in charge of everything. The original term, principal, means principal teacher, principal academic leader. I'd like us to look at a system where we have in every school an academic leader who works with the teachers, who works on academic programs, and I'd like to see a system where we take teachers who are succeeding in the classroom and move them up into exceedingly more complex administrative roles, maybe first overseeing four teachers, eight teachers, 10 teachers, and eventually moving up into that role. And I'd like to see us consider going outside of the traditional approach and using people who have actual business training to do things like take care of the parking lot, to take care of, if the buses are running on time. I think that because we require principals to do so many things, I think they wind up doing... Some of them do a great job, I think, but I think many of them wind up doing not very many of them well. So I'd like to see us rethink the whole process. I think it's critically important that we have teachers, that we have principals trained. I think it's important that principals shadow successful principals before they become principals. I think it's critical that they understand how the whole school works.
Probably have time for about two more, so I'll go for Aaron, and I saw your hand up, and then we'll go to final comments. But certainly, I'm sure you guys will probably stick around for a few minutes to answer questions also on an individual level. I apologize to those people who have had their hands up, just many people have across the room, and so apologies for not being able to get to each one.
I'm the parent of a gun child who will be soon an EPS student, and I want him to have a really good, well-rounded education. And I'm concerned that the trend has been putting in place more structural things that push a sort of a teach-to-the-test approach rather than a focus on other things that may not be as easily quantifiable. Is that a concern that I'm overly concerned about, or is that something that you would reinforce my concerns on?
So my turn first. I forget.
Yeah, it's your turn.
I think that's a serious issue, and I think as a school board member, one of my principal goals would be to make sure that if there's a school that's actually doing what you're suggesting is really teaching to the test, we need to stop that. One of the reasons we put extra funding in 3A for arts, music, physical education, enrichment is so that we didn't have that happening, so we had a creative background for kids. I think that's critical. We had this same problem you're talking about when I was co-chair of the governing committee at Denver School of the Arts. We had teachers, we had the principal, we had everybody in the school upset about the number of tests. We were taking kids out of social studies classes to take tests, out of math classes to take tests. It was disrupting learning. We had the chief test person from downtown come in and sit down and talk to us, talk about our population, all the tests we were doing. And we were successful in getting them to eliminate a number of those tests, to get the kids back in the room, and to schedule the other tests so they didn't interfere. I think it's important that we have a way to measure whether kids are learning, but I think all the tests have to be based on what are we... We need to know what we're gonna do with the information before we create a test. We need to only have tests that are gonna give us information that are gonna allow us to change our academic program so kids who aren't learning are learning.
How many of you remembered the Iowa standardized tests? Do any of you remember how long it took to take those tests? One day a year. And it tested what I was learning the rest of the year, not how to fill out a bubble, not how to strategize, how to figure out the process of elimination, not figuring out little snippets of life, because my life and my children's lives are not snippets. And this educational reform movement is a $100 billion industry nationally. The only reason we're testing is we're making a lot of money for a lot of other people, but it's not helping our kids. And I'm glad that the mill levy is bringing us enrichment classes, but the kind of curriculum I'm talking about is a core curriculum. It's a standalone curriculum, and it's important that we not relegate it to enrichment, where we may or may not have certified teachers teaching our children music, art, social studies. Those things need to be taught by certified teachers, not enrichment companies that come in and do after-school enrichment. I've had lots of enrichment experience with my kids and as a PTO president. But I think that it's important when we're talking about this that we look at classes that are standalone, that are not integrated into a curriculum of math, reading, and science, because as good as that is, and I'd like to see us continuing to do that, you need to teach those classes exclusively, not put it into your math curriculum that fractions are part of a music curriculum. You need to teach people in a long, broad manner, all of these core courses, so that we are life-ready in addition to career and college-ready.
And last question for you.
Let's stop making so much money off of three months of preparing for the test, and we'll go into Park after this meeting because we've got some real problems coming up this year with the initiation of Common Core and the Park exam. Thank you.
So last question?
Hi there.
Hi.
This is kind of to piggyback off of the question that was just asked. I'd like to hear your ideas on new ways to evaluate whether our schools are effective. And this is kind of, I've got two short anecdotes. My son never tested proficient on the CSAT except for in science and vocabulary from the moment he entered Colorado schools, which was kindergarten, to 12th grade. Yet freshman year in college, he had a 3.6 GPA. Additionally, my neighborhood school has about 58 different countries represented and mother tongues, not just Spanish. So now we're dealing with populations that have different, you know, original languages. So how can you evaluate whether a school is doing well on these stupid tests? What are your ideas? What are your ideas to create new ways to evaluate whether schools are effective so that someone does not feel that they have to send their kid to some charter school? That doesn't mean these kids aren't smart.
That's right. Actually, I think you're first. Finish it up on the...
Okay. I think you already know where I come from as far as standardized tests. I think it's important, and one of the reasons we brought in Imagine Learning to our school to teach our children how to read was because of language barriers. Place Bridge Academy is in our district, and it is a school that has probably over 100 languages, and they're doing a great job with having parent welcome centers, and they're using this computerized literacy program in a way that we should be using it, not immersing all of the kids at Lowry Elementary School and making that an option or alternative to teaching reading. I think that there is a national assessment tool that we've been using for years, looking at the school's performance. Now, we have a school performance framework here in Colorado, Denver, Denver has its own, that's like a stop sign. We have red, yellow, orange, green, and blue. And I think that the way they weight some of the things in that SPF rating is not a good way to weight. And we've talked a little bit in other debates about those factors. They include 50%... They include 50% of an evaluation of a teacher is based on their child's standardized test scores. And a child who is in poverty, who hasn't eaten, who hasn't slept, who's been called upon by a family member who's working at night to take care of their siblings, they're not going to go into a classroom able to learn or to be doing a good job on the standardized tests. So, I think we should look at some of the other testing that we've done in the past that works. We should trust our teachers who are doing star assessments, who are doing benchmark assessments throughout the entire year to give us information about how our kids are doing. If our teachers don't know how our kids are doing, then we are really doomed in this district. And we need to trust our teachers and our gut as parents, that our kids are doing well or need more help. Sorry. It's important.
That's a great question, and it really brings home what I think we need to do in Denver Public Schools. I think every child is unique. There isn't a one-size-fits-all. My biggest goal on the school board is to get rid of top-down rules, to get rid of top-down centralized administration, and to give the power to the parents, the kids, and the teachers, and the community in that school to devise a program that really works for those kids. I'd love to have an individual education program for every kid and all the resources possible for that. I don't think that's probably financially feasible. I think the next step is to have the schools with their population devise what works for those kids, and I'd like to have lots of options so that different kids who have different needs can go from school to, can go to a school that really works for them. I think that we've gotten ourselves into a system where there's too much central administration. I want to turn it back to the parents and the community in each individual school.
Great. So, we are down to our two...